Aloha, everyone. If you're just joining, we're gonna give it a couple more minutes and we'll get started around five thirty-three. Give a couple more minutes for other people to join. Aloha and mahalo for joining everyone. My name is David Sakota. I'm the Fisheries Program Manager for the State of Hawaii, Department of Land and Natural Resources, Division of Aquatic Resources. I will be conducting tonight's public hearing along with the DAR staff at our in-person host site. It is now five thirty-three PM and this public hearing is called to order. This is a formal statewide public hearing on proposed amendments to Hawaii Administrative Rules, Chapter thirteen dash ninety-five, Rules Regulating the Taking and Selling of Certain Marine Resources. The primary purpose of this proposal is to update rules for Manini, Kala, Uhu, and Papaikualoa or Kona crab, establish rules for Kole, and update the chapter with other various housekeeping amendments. As required by law, the proposed rules have been drafted in Ramzer format, copies of which can be found in the Announcements section of the DAR website. And those attending the meeting in person may ask DAR staff for a copy. This public hearing is being simultaneously livestreamed to the DAR YouTube channel for anyone wishing to observe the public hearing but not provide testimony. For your convenience, the address to the DAR YouTube channel is at the top of this slide, and a link to the livestream has also been pasted into the chat. The purpose of this hearing is to provide the public the opportunity to provide comments in the form of oral and written testimony on these proposed amendments. Approval to conduct this public hearing was obtained from the Board of Land and Natural Resources at their board meeting on May twelfth, twenty twenty-three. The legal notice of this public hearing was published in the July seventh, twenty twenty-three Sunday issue of the Honolulu Star Advertiser. Additionally, notice of this public hearing was posted on the Draft Rules and Public Notices page of the DAR website, where digital copies of the draft rules in Ramzer format can be found, as well as posted on the Announcements page of the DAR website. Hearing procedures. First, we will watch a short video explaining the proposed changes to the administrative rules. We will begin the public testimony period, which will be conducted as follows. Everyone testifying via Zoom was required to pre-register in order to get the link to testify. We will keep registration open throughout the public hearing, and will monitor our email in case anyone has trouble registering or joining the Zoom meeting to provide their testimony. However, if you're unable to join via Zoom, you may still provide oral testimony at the in-person hearing location listed on this slide, or you may submit written testimony by following the directions at the bottom of this slide. Everyone testifying in person at the host site should have written their information down on the sign-in sheet provided at the host site. Those attending in person who have not registered but would like to provide testimony can alert the DAR public hearing officer at your in-person site at this time, and your name will be added to the list. It is important that everyone who wishes to testify provide their name and contact information, so we have an accurate record of everyone providing testimony. You will be called upon by a member of the DAR staff when it is your turn to testify. We ask that all individuals attending virtually keep their microphones muted when not speaking. We will take testimony in the following order. First, we'll take in-person testimony from people who have been signed up to testify at the in-person host site at the Stevenson Middle School Cafeteria. And once all in-person testimony is gathered, we will take Zoom testimony. Please keep your testimony brief and on the subject to allow everyone the opportunity to testify. Each person providing testimony will be given three minutes. Please be aware that if you go beyond three minutes, I will kindly ask you to conclude your testimony. We are recording this hearing to make a complete and accurate record of the proceedings, so please state your full name before giving your testimony. Make sure to speak clearly, so we accurately record your testimony for the record. Please turn off the live YouTube stream of this hearing while testifying, as it will cause an echo. Please remember to respect the opinions of all testifiers, and that this hearing is not an opportunity for accusations or rebuttals. There may be differing opinions. Everyone will have an opportunity to voice their opinion for the department to consider. All testimony should be directed to me, not to the audience. Once again, please note that this hearing is simultaneously being streamed on YouTube. The livestream will be recorded and preserved on YouTube as a matter of public record. Please be aware that by offering your oral testimony today, you are consenting to being audio and video recorded if your camera is on. Let's begin with a short video on the background explaining the proposed administrative rules.
Proposed amendments to Hawaii Administrative Rules, Chapter thirteen dash ninety-five, Rules Regulating the Taking and Selling of Certain Marine Resources, Papaikualoa or Kona Crab. DAR has identified the need to amend the rules for Papaikualoa based on a number of factors. In twenty eighteen, a stock assessment was conducted, which suggests that the Papaikualoa population is healthy. There is currently an annual catch limit, or ACL, in place, and current harvest numbers have been well below the established ACL, indicating that an increase in harvest would be sustainable to Papaikualoa populations. Current regulations that prohibit the take of any female Papaikualoa result in eighty percent discard rates due to catch being female or undersized. Additionally, an extended closed season will help prevent catch of females with eggs. Current rules for Papaikualoa are a minimum carapace length of four inches, no taking of females with or without eggs, and a closed season of May through August. The proposed amendments to the Papaikualoa rules keep the same minimum size of four inches, but allows the take of females without eggs and extends the closed season an additional month from May through September. Proposed amendments to Hawaii Administrative Rules, Chapter thirteen dash ninety-five, Rules Regulating the Taking and Selling of Marine Resources, Manini, Kole, Kala, and Uhu. Pictured here are the fish species with new or amended rules within this proposal. They are Manini, or convict tang, Kole, or goldering surgeon fish, Kala, or blue-spine unicorn fish, and all species of Uhu, or parrot fish. Manini, Kole, Kala, and Uhu are all important food fish. They are important to both recreational and subsistence fisheries, and in some cases, sustain commercial fisheries as well. Because of their widespread importance to fishing, DAR wants to take a proactive approach to ensuring that their populations are sustained in perpetuity. Also, increasing non-fishing threats put added pressure onto the resource. Coral bleaching, poor water quality, and habitat loss are just some threats to these fisheries and are expected to get worse with climate change and a growing human population. Fisheries management may not address these threats directly, but will offer these species some relief as future action, including land-based initiatives, increase. Additionally, herbivores play a crucial role on reefs, maintaining balance and providing the right conditions for corals to flourish. Large-bodied Uhu in particular aid in the settlement of larval coral with no redundancy in the ecosystem, meaning there are no other species to fill the role they play within the ecosystem if they are depleted. The current rules for Manini are a minimum size of five inches. The proposed rule would increase the minimum length to six inches to match the upper range of the L fifty or the length where approximately fifty percent of the population has reached reproductive maturity. There is no current statewide rule for Kole. The proposed rules include a minimum size for Kole of five inches. Although the minimum size is conservative when compared to the L fifty for Kole of three point three to three point nine inches, the proposed minimum size is consistent with the size that most spearfishers harvest Kole. Currently, the statewide rule for Kala is a minimum length of fourteen inches with no bag limit. The current minimum length is consistent with the L fifty for Kala at just under fourteen inches. The proposed rules for non-commercial take of Kala keep the minimum size limit at fourteen inches, but also include a bag limit of two per person per day. As a means to reduce the commercial take of Kala while still maintaining the commercial fishery, DAR proposes separate rules for the commercial taking and selling of Kala. The proposed commercial rules for Kala would require a commercial Kala fisher to obtain a separate commercial Kala fishing permit in addition to a commercial marine license, or CML, which is required for all persons wishing to sell their catch. The permit fee would be one hundred dollars annually in addition to the fee for a CML, and in order to maintain eligibility for a commercial Kala fishing permit, permit holder must have caught and sold at least one hundred pounds of Kala within the previous year if they had a commercial Kala fishing permit within the last twelve months. The proposed rules for commercial Kala fishing permit holders are a commercial daily bag limit of fifty Kala per permit holder per day, no commercial harvest or sale during the Kala spawning season of April through July, an annual catch limit, or ACL, of ten thousand pounds. When the ACL is reached, the fishery will be closed for commercial harvest or sale for the rest of the year. Additionally, the proposed rules requires dealers who sell Kala to register as a commercial Kala dealer. With the exception of Maui, the current statewide rules for Uhupalukaluka, Uhulelele, Uhuhu'ula, and Uhuhuliuli, which are collectively referred to as large-bodied Uhu, is a minimum length of twelve inches with no bag limit. The proposed rules for non-commercial take of large-bodied Uhu would prohibit the take of Uhulelele and Uhuhuliuli, the terminal phase, blue, large-bodied Uhu, increase the minimum size for Uhupalukaluka and Uhuhu'ula, the initial phase, red, large-bodied Uhu, from twelve inches to fourteen inches, and impose a combined total non-commercial bag limit of two per person per day for all Uhu species, both large-bodied and small-bodied, mirroring the Maui Uhu rules. Again, with the exception of Maui, the current statewide rule for small-bodied species of Uhu is a minimum length of twelve inches, noting that Ponuhunuhu and yellowbar parrot fish are not regulated. The proposed rule would apply the Maui rules statewide with a minimum length of ten inches for non-commercial take of all small-bodied species of Uhu. Also, as mentioned in the previous slide, small-bodied Uhu would be included within the combined total non-commercial bag limit of two per person per day for all Uhu species. Similar to Kala, the proposed rules include separate rules for commercial Uhu fishers and dealers. The proposed commercial rules for Uhu would require a commercial Uhu fisher to obtain a separate commercial Uhu fishing permit, which is a separate permit from the commercial Kala fishing permit, in addition to a commercial marine license. The permit fee would be one hundred dollars annually in addition to the fee for a commercial marine license. And in order to maintain eligibility for a commercial Uhu fishing permit, a permit holder must have caught and sold at least three hundred forty pounds of Uhu within the previous year if they had a commercial Uhu fishing permit within the last twelve months. The proposed rules for commercial Uhu fishing permit holders are a commercial daily bag limit of thirty Uhu per permit holder per day, a commercial slot limit of fourteen to twenty inches, meaning a minimum size of fourteen inches and a maximum size of twenty inches, no commercial harvest or sale during the Uhu spawning season of February through May, an annual catch limit of thirty-four thousand pounds. Again, when the ACL is reached, the fishery will be closed for commercial harvest or sale for the rest of the year. And only Uhupalukaluka, or initial phase red-lipped parrot fish, is allowed for commercial taking and selling. Additionally, the proposed rules requires dealers who sell Uhu to register as a commercial Uhu dealer. To illustrate the allowable catch of all Uhu species, here are all the species that are proposed to be regulated, which would be all Uhu species, both large-bodied and small-bodied. For non-commercial take, Uhuhuliuli and Uhulelele would be prohibited, as indicated in this slide. For commercial take, all Uhu would be prohibited, except Uhupalukaluka.
We have now reached the public testimony portion of this hearing. As a reminder, the address to the DAR YouTube channel is at the top of this slide, and a link to the livestream has also been pasted into the chat. If you just want to listen in to this hearing without providing testimony, you're welcome to log off the Zoom meeting and view the YouTube livestream of this hearing. If you remain in the Zoom meeting, you'll be called upon by a member of the DAR staff when it is your turn to testify. And we ask that all individuals attending virtually keep their microphones muted when not speaking. As I mentioned earlier, we will take testimony in the following order. First, we'll take in-person testimony from people who have been signed up to testify at the in-person host site on Oahu. And once all in-person testimony is gathered, we'll take Zoom testimony. As a reminder, please keep your testimony to three minutes in order to ensure that everyone who signed up has a chance to give testimony. If there is extra time at the end of everyone on the list, and you would like more time to testify, we will allow those who already spoke to give additional testimony. I will now stop sharing my screen, so everyone providing testimony can be clearly seen. Okay, first, we'll take any in-person testimony on Oahu.
Yep, you sit down.
How come I'm not on?
Gotta read this list. Can't do it all in three minutes, otherwise.
Aloha. If you could please state your name and start your testimony.
Hi, I'm Guy Thomas Shaw from Thomas Shaw Market. For the Manini, increase the minimum length from five inches to six inches. We're okay with this. Kole, creating a minimum length of five inches. This is fine. Kona crab, we're happy that the females can be sold. The one-month increase in the closed season is a fair trade. Kala, apparently the goal of these regulations are to reduce the catch of Kala by twenty-five percent. These multiple solutions are overkill. By having the closed season for four months in the most productive time of the year should more than accomplish the twenty-five percent reduction of catch. By having annual catch limit also ensures a goal of twenty-five percent redundant. We probably don't even need a bag limit. Best solution, close seasons from April through July for the commercial fishermen. During the open season, hundred pieces bag limit per day. For non-commercial, bag limit four pieces per day and open year round. For Uhu, proposing a closed seasonal closure and an annual catch limit again is overkill. Should be one or the other. There are several species of Uhu in Hawaii. The majority of people do not know the different species by their scientific or Hawaiian name other than Uhu. Neither do I, and I've been in the industry for almost fifty years selling reef fish. We need to keep it simple and sensible. Kiss. Keep it simple and sensible. Keep all species at twelve inches, not lowering some to ten and then others at fourteen. Considering a size maximum of twenty inches is much too small. That's only a six-pound fish. We separate the Uhu by size and pay accordingly. Our medium size is four and a half to six and a half pounds. The large is seven pounds of them. Let nature do its job. Uhus are sequential hermaphrodites. All of us, all of them start as females, and then some change to males. We do not need to ban the catch on the sale of terminal males to blue Uhu. Many of the blue Uhu that are caught are in transition. You can see both red and blue. What do we classify that as? Especially for the Uhu, and it's several species, we want to manage the fishery, not micromanage it. The best step in the right direction is a seasonal closure during the spawning cycle. It is clean and simple and should do the job. If a bag limit must be added on for the commercial fishermen, closed season from February through May, open season, bag limit sixty pieces. For the non-commercial, bag limit four pieces per day and open year round. The commercial fishermen are not the bad guys. They provide food for the public, just like beef, pork, and chicken producers. Many of us do not have the knowledge, skill, or health to catch fish. Fishermen respect the ocean and are very diligent about protecting the resource. It's their livelihood. Thank you.
Mahalo. Aloha. Please state your name.
As a waterman for the last sixty years, I've seen the decline of our fishery. And in my opinion, and coming from a science background, general science and marine biology, as a doctor, I have seen that the information provided by the, in this proposed rules, there's no, there's no science to it. Show me the science is basically my question. The other factor is, why don't we address the things that are causing the decline of the fish stocks instead of denying the fishermen and commercial fishermen the right to harvest these fish? The other factor, I believe, is enforcement. There's no enforcement. We don't have money for our DNLR to help enforce, so. Two of the biggest things that I've seen in my years of diving and fishing is netting and spearfishing. You take away those two things, and you'll see a big change. Why do you want to make more proposals when you should take care of the problem rather than cause more problems by increasing these limits? Basically, the fish have a maturity rate as long as the size limit is set so that they have at least one year to spawn, then you know they've already spawned. So by increasing even further, you're just making it harder because they've already reached pretty much their maximum length, and then to increase it further, it's going to take even longer for them to get that size because they're very slow-growing fish. So that's my take. I'm against this proposal. Thank you.
Can you state your name for the record? I believe that was Dr. Darrell Wong. Next up, on Oahu.
My name is Alton Miasaka. My testimony is an opposition found under the H fact. Our testimony, the written testimony is valid. We are breaking up our opposition in three categories versus you have faulty assumptions, second, you have faulty science, and the third is you have easily insufficient legal authorities to do what you want to do. So first, limiting herbivore take will not reduce the alien overgrowth problem that that you're occurring, that you're having. That's the first faulty assumption. Faulty science is that Uhus are not algae eaters, and so to protect, to regulate Uhu because they're herbivores is based on faulty science. Removing algae will be removed algae will be replaced by more algae and will not be replaced by corals. That's the second faulty science. The third, Kona crab, larger, larger female Kona crabs have to have smaller males in order to successfully mate. So if you're removing the larger Kona crabs, you can reduce the likelihood that they'll be successful mating in the species. So you should have a slot limit, a maximum size, instead of no size limit on the take of females. It's a, the DNLR doesn't have the legal authority for permits, ECLs, and registration. And the lack of the public information notice failed to identify the proposed commercial ECLs and they're missing the proposed fee changes. I noted that there were ECL, your bag limits for non-commercial. Having the ECLs mentioned, but not specifically put in the notice is insufficient notice to commercial fishing. Thank you for your, for the opportunity to comment. Thank you very much.
Hey, thank you. Anyone else on Oahu?
Dave.
You might go ahead and state your name.
Got some testimony that's gonna submit. It's kind of long, so just gonna hit some key points is that our main concern is that the land board directed you to come out with reasonable bag limits for a commercial fisherman. And at this point, you guys haven't reached out to the right people because different gear types catch different amounts of fish. So the way you guys have it all is all geared for night diving, and the small guys that don't catch a lot of fish will be hurt by what you're trying to do. So I think we need to have you sit down to stakeholders and come out with a a a mechanism to address the gear types that are being used in Hawaii. So I think you guys overlooked that. And I would like to emphasize that at the last Senate meeting at the state Capitol for the thirty by thirty, you guys were gonna tell us or engage fishermen, and you guys have failed to do that. Well, I hope that you guys are willing to sit down and talk about stakeholders, Dave. We're still waiting for your phone call, so give us a shout so we can work this thing out. Thank you.
Thank you.
David.
Hey, go ahead.
You're the only face I'm looking at, so I guess I gotta talk to you.
Yeah, if you could state your name for the record.
My name is Ed Watamura. I'm the Executive Director for HFA and also the President of the Wailea Boat Club. So my testimony is going to be kind of brief because the HFA testimony was written and presented by Alton. So I'll just try to encapsulate my thoughts. So best available science was mentioned before. And my understanding is that one study was used. where there were numerous other studies of the herbivore stock abundance and were not used. And as far as I know, only one was used. And one of the premises that you mentioned was that taking less herbivores will improve the health of corals. And I believe that that is really flawed. Global warming and ocean acidification is the elephant in the room. The effect of which is overwhelming and any rule changes for herbivores will be inconsequential. The temperatures in Florida just last week were close to a hundred degrees in the water. And don't mind the pun, but the corals there are toast. I want to talk about buy-in and compliance. So if you don't get the buy-in of the fishing community, you're not going to get compliance. You're going to get civil disobedience, just like with the burfas. No trust leads to no compliance. And that means you need enforcement and enforcement is already a real problem. So I was told that part of this process is that you're gonna take, I guess, the temperature in the room. In other words, how many people are for and how many people are against? But only those that are testifying are gonna state whether they're for or against. So I wanted to actually ask the room, how many people in the room are against these proposals? Let me see by a raise of hands. Alright, thank you. And I think you should also, you know, see the people that are online doing the virtual too because I know they're not, a lot of people are not going to talk and they're just viewing, but to get a, you know, a real assessment of what the fishing community is saying, you need to, you need to do that. And the other thing I did in here was a sunset clause. And that one thing is missing from many of the DAR rules and regulations. And I believe that from this point on, everything that's proposed should have a sunset clause. Thank you very much.
Hey, thank you.
Hi, Titus Salter, Ohana Kai Dive Club and Outriver New Club. I like the proposals for the most part. The pole and manini proposals seem fair enough. If anyone really wants to shoot a fish under five inches, they can shoot to ape. The collar limits look good when beside in Fisheries Labs did their tournament last year to analyze the otoliths. They showed that like they have a super slow maturation rate. So I think having bag limits there is very good. Also a fan of the bag limits on oohoo. On the commercial side, the annual catch limit seemed like a good start and a reasonable place for people to work from. However, I do think it would be nice to allow non-commercial take of blue oohoo just because it's a transitional fish. It's sometimes hard for newer divers to really tell where that stopping point is. And then older divers who may not be used to like the new rules, or I guess older fishers who may not be used to the new rules may still want that big trophy blue oohoo. I think as long as they're respecting bag limits, it should still work. Even if that meant even lowering bag limits, I'd be a fan of it just because those big blues are magnificent trophies. And I, I think it's valid for people to want to chase that, especially if it means they're not going to take all the little reds or all the other breeders that might not be at that trophy size at the moment. Yeah, annual catch limit seemed good. I like that small oohoo are being regulated because a lot of people don't even know about them or usually don't even know whether or not they're regulated. So yeah, aside from those few caveats, mostly, mostly in favor of things. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, David. My name is Manuel Mejia with the Coral Reef Alliance. Our organization would like to commend the DLNR and its Division of Aquatic Resources, the department and their staff in taking the first steps to have these open and respectful discussions in promulgating these herbivore rules. We believe that these rules are sensible. They're a good idea, long overdue and much needed if we are to protect our coral reef ecosystems, which in turn protect our coastlines and our communities' island way of life for food security and well-being. Across the state, but most severely on Anahuahua, the science from prominent researchers and respected fishermen have identified that overharvesting as the main factor in drastic declines in herbivore populations. We need to do something and it is a great start. We are in support of these sensible rules that can help bring back healthy populations of herbivores. To be most effective, we urge DAR and the public to take into account seasons of spawning, the critical times which to protect these herbivores and to take into consideration traditional management, local knowledge and best practices to ensure subsistence and balance food security with ecological protection. Hawaii has done it in the past and we can achieve this balance again with everyone's cooperation and sacrifice. At the same time, it'll take improving our water quality and reducing pollutants from land, increase enforcement and funding to DLNR. Mahalo for this opportunity to express my support of DAR herbivore rules and for your leadership and all that you do to ensure Hawaii's sustainability for everyone's benefit. Lastly, I'd like to encourage everyone to continue these discussions and learn more by visiting fishpono.org on the importance, the ecological importance that herbivores play for Hawaii's environment. Mahalo.
Hey, mahalo.
Hi, aloha. I'm Anthony Cheng. I'm with the Nature Conservancy of Hawaii. Mahalo for holding this public hearing about these proposed rules. TNT supports the rules to help sustainably manage the fisheries on Hawaii's coral reefs. Coral reefs are vital to feeding our communities and provide shoreline protection from erosion and storm surges and for recreation throughout the state. And their herbivores are key to ensuring the health of these coral reefs and reef resilience in the face of increased stressors because they eat the algae that grows on the coral and the areas without algae or where coral larvae settle and grow. The ability of reefs to recover from damage depends on the presence of an abundant diverse population of herbivores that can help, that can keep seaweed populations in check and keeping reef area clear for new corals to settle and grow. The proposed rules will help to manage these herbivore populations and coral reefs so that communities can fish for these species for generations to come. We support these proposals also because they are in line with community-based assistance fishing area rules that were developed by dedicated communities. And SOC assessments have shown that these, that in many areas, species populations are declining. So we must enact management practices to allow for recovery. So thank you again for the work to support sustainable management of Hawaii's nearshore fisheries and look forward to continuing to work with you. Mahalo.
Thank you.
Um, I'm for it, but then it's all about enforcement because
Please state your name, please.
You could have all these regulations, but people that's going to follow, they're going to follow no matter what. People that's going to break the rules, they're going to break the rules no matter what. It's all about enforcement. So for example, open season, closed season, that's super effective because it's clear cut. For example, January through March is full season. So even people that do not dish, it's, it's, it's clear cut. Okay, so if they catch this species within January through March, it's illegal. It's clear cut. When you talk about size limit, that's so hard to measure. It's like from a person's perspective, a twelve inch oohoo looks the same as a fourteen inch oohoo. But then if you differentiate a male oohoo and a female oohoo, it's really clear cut. A blue oohoo is prohibited. A red oohoo is allowed. So those kind of clear cut measurement is going to really help with enforcements because people that follow the regulation, they will follow no matter what. But then people that find loopholes and find ways to break it, they're going to find ways to break it. And it's all about enforcement. You can have all these regulations and all these proposals, but you know, who's going to enforce it? So it's really, it's helpful to have it. It's really clear cut. Open season, closed seasons, male species, female species, that's really easy to identify to the public whether they have knowledge of, yeah, the fishing knowledge. So it's all about enforcement. Because other than that, you know, people will break the regulations no matter what. It's, that's why we're in this situation. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Aloha. Can you please state your name for the record and then begin?
My name is Joby Roar and I'm principally a spearfisher from the east side of Waho. I'd just like to say that I think there's many issues with the fisheries in Hawaii that are way beyond DAR's abilities to address. And I think you guys have done what you can with this first set of herbivore rules. I'm in full support of them. A couple of suggestions, you've heard about enforcement already. I would second those thoughts about enforcement. That's a huge part of the regulations and without it, it's hard to know how effective it will be. I also wonder if there's an ability to do regulations differently in different places across the state. I know that might be something that's hard to administer, but obviously there's very different pressures and very different situations going on across the diversity of our Hawaiian waters. And lastly, I just say that I think in general, change is something that's hard for everybody, especially for fishermen and people that are used to doing what they've been doing for many, many years on the ocean. But I think everybody probably knows that the fishing isn't like it used to be and is probably going to continue to get worse. And I would support any action that would support the fisheries for the next generations so that they can enjoy the fishing like I have in my time. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony and I support your efforts.
Hey, thank you. Aloha. If you could state your name and proceed.
My name is Moana Hillen. I'm here for myself and on behalf of my dad Fred Hillen. From my experience, I go diving almost every day and I can say that there's plenty of collar movement on this. We just have to know where to look. These regulations will not only hurt our business, but every other fisherman and market as well. This is my livelihood. I grew up in the ocean and it's being taken away. We've been catching fish for generations and I would like to continue the tradition for future generations to live with as well. That's why I'm against it. Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Aloha. My name is Bert Weeks. I'm born and raised on Anahuahua and these are my opinions based on my own experiences diving. I usually spearfish around Anahuahua, mostly on the south and west side. And I kind of often shoot herbivores with my three prong because I like to take one manini for my auntie who likes that one fish. So I usually try to bring her one. I'm supportive of these herbivore rules and I'll lay out a couple of reasons here. Our reefs are about to get hit hard with bleaching and they need help. So just try to look at Florida right now and you see what their corals are going through and it's super brutal. A lot, it's been a really hot summer and I'm really worried that the next couple of months that our reefs are going to get hit with the same thing and bleach like they did in 2015, 2016, and 2019. The bleached corals aren't dead yet and more herbivores can help prevent the bleached ones from getting overgrown by algae and die. So there's not a lot that we in Hawaii can do about the ocean temperature globally, but increasing our herbivores is something that we can do to protect our resources when it does happen. The second reason why I support these rules is that better rules help educate fishers. The last couple of years since COVID, I've noticed that there's a lot more spearfishers at popular beginner spots such as Kahai Point. And there's a lot of online message boards and there are a lot asking, you know, what do I shoot? The regulation book is often the first place people learn the names of fish and what's good to take. So it's important that we give them guidance on acceptable sizes. The current twelve inch rule for oohoo was enacted in nineteen ninety-eight, twenty-five years ago. We know a lot more about oohoo since then and the rules should be updated to reflect that. I like eating oohoo and I definitely see a lot less in the popular areas that are fished more heavily. I like to see more of them so I don't have to work so hard to bring one home. I've heard a lot of valid criticism about these rules. They're definitely not perfect. But I do see a lot of compromise was from what was from originally proposed, especially when it comes to the commercial exceptions. No one is really happy with a compromise, but it's better than shutting out either side completely. I'd like to see these rules also integrated into more place-based management. For example, some places that have a ton of fish don't need collar bag limits and might be good to grant exceptions for some of these regulated areas. But letting the fishers from those communities decide where that might be. There's a lot of other kind of technical reasons for some of these rules. So I'd like to see more education about the rule justification, such as the blue oohoo ban, which has a lot of good reasons, but it's kind of complicated. I'm sure there's a lot of people who could use more clarification. I hope that through proper management, we can ensure that our reefs are healthy with plenty of fish so I can teach my kids, just like my dad and my grandpa taught me. Mahalo for your time.
Mahalo.
Hello, David. Thank you for this opportunity to testify. My name is Ronald Tam and my testimony is in opposition of the proposed rule. I've developed an eighteen-page document, copy of which I've provided to Luna and I will also email as you directed in your opening statements. My dark testimony is related, the findings of fact, attendant to the May twenty-third DLNR land board meeting, research that are conducted using artificial intelligence and other sources as I've denoted. I'll try and summarize. Firstly, let me say that I'm rather fascinated at how a product of climate change, coral bleaching, has segued into overfishing. It's like apples and oranges. Secondly, the science, I said it in quotes, identified and provided in support of the proposal is inadequate, inappropriate in terms of recognized fisheries management practices. Generally, the science is data poor, thereby evoking too many assumptions of what ifs. It will be interesting to learn whether the DAR cited science used as the basis for the proposed rules withstands rigorous, bona fide peer review. Peer review being a standard practice within fisheries management. Absent this bona fide peer review, this process that we're going through is a sham. The department picks the science, they cherry pick it, they claim that the science is compelling and the rest is meaningless. Peer review is essential. Additionally, separately, there is an absence of sufficient science to support the proposed bag and size limit. Additionally, there are no provisions for regular and continuous monitoring and analysis of the impacts after establishment of the proposed rules. Based on past practice, this will result in the rules once established remaining in place regardless of merit. As I just previously stated, there are no provisions also to ensure employment of adaptive management practices to implement change as may be warranted by the continuous monitoring and analysis of the impacts of establishment of the proposed rule. That needs to be included in the language, otherwise it doesn't get done. Separately, the one-size-fits-all approach is inappropriate. For example, what is applicable to Waikiki is not necessarily applicable to the North Shore of Molokah. Additionally, fish is food. Consideration of subsistence fishing is appropriate. I also support the Kona crab rule change, but after hearing what Mr. Miyazaki has to say, I may have to go back and backtrack on that. Now I'm a little confused, more confused than I normally am, David. That's the summary I'm in opposition. And um given the opportunity, I would like to initiate, I'd like to discuss the administrative issue relating to the submission of emails regarding this testimony. Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Aloha Maekako. I am Kapua Kavelo. Um, I hail from Kahalouu, Winro, Winro, Oahu. Um, come from a family of fishers that have been fishing in Kanyo Hibe for generations. Um, my dad grew up in a time of abundance on Kanyo Hibe in Pakole, um, where he did everything. He didn't see limits, commercial, lots of netting around surrounding schools. And um, and I think there's just so many more people now that 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 approach to fishing is just not sustainable. I think there's just so much more pressure and we have to acknowledge that and be honest about that and um and take ownership and responsibility in Kuleana for that. My dad um takes us to spots where he had caught plenty of fish in those same spots, the abundance is no longer there. Um, my daughter is new generation of spearfisher and I want her to be able to experience that abundance in her home um Moana, Mo-Monna, like her papa did. So I support these rules 100%. Mahalo DAR for um, yeah, trying to, trying to get us on track.
Hey, mahalo.
I'll have a rip. That's it for Oahu.
Hey, thanks Brian. Okay, next we'll take Zoom testimony. If you have registered for this Zoom hearing, we'll presume that you're interested in providing testimony. So we'll be calling your name in the order that you've signed up. If you do not wish to provide oral testimony, please simply indicate so when we call your name or you can let us know through the chat feature. Okay, first up we have Clint Fujimoto. Okay, next Chuck Kelly. Next Christine Bukinari. And next um Karen Ono. Next John Souza. Next Roy Morioka. Roy, do you wish to provide testimony?
Oh, yes, I do. I was wondering if there's others, we just skipped over too fast.
Um, I, yeah, I don't see them on the Zoom meeting, but I was reading just in case, but go ahead, Roy.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Bob David, for allowing me to provide this testimony. I stand by my written testimony with regard to the herbivores based on the fact that I strongly believe that the stock assessment used um to determine the take is is based on incomplete science and uh you can read about it in my, in my testimony. I would suggest that everyone here on this call look at Oahu, look at its development and look at the loss of our fresh water flows into the stream via the streams and by groundwater seepage. That I suggest is a reason for our nearshore species to be in such decline, including the limo. Think about it. There are many studies done on the diatoms that used to flow in our rivers and streams and clean freshwater bubbling up in our aquifers. And the loss of our mulivai. Mulivai are the estuaries, the breeding ground for the baby fish. Think about it. How much of it has been lost just on Mauna Lua Bay? How many ponds have been filled? How many of you know Waialai used to be a swamp? You know, we need to look back and and look at the failure of our Kuleana to take care of the Maokamakai relationship. There's a study now being done by DAR and some other folks to try and restore water to Mauna Lua, just one place. And and it's suggested that an eight inch pipe would of new groundwater would really provide a, restore the abundance in Mauna Lua Bay. An eight inch pipe, just imagine that. I support Mike Sear's comment on engaging fishermen in a promulgation of fishery rules and I strongly urge you, Dave, that you do that. Secondly, I concur with Eduardo Muro on the process of these hearings. There's no way for those in the room who have heard someone else provide testimony in concurrence to what they're feeling to have an opportunity to be counted. Likewise, those on the Zoom portion, they should be provided a checklist so that each line item that you are referring to in this hearing can have adequate response. Three minutes is just not enough. Thank you, David. Much mahalo.
Hey, mahalo. Next on the Zoom, Mark Hickson.
Aloha, I'm Mark Hickson, endowed professor of marine biology at UH Manoa. I'm testifying today as a private citizen. I've studied coral refer to wars in Hawaii on and off since the 1970s. Having listened to all the recent DAR public hearings about the proposed herbivore fishing rules, I feel compelled to address scientific inaccuracies I've heard from both those who support and those who oppose these proposals. I also offer some alternative policy options that may be more effective than some of those proposed. I have five main points, which will be detailed in my written testimony along with um peer-reviewed science, peer-reviewed papers. First, herbivores are extremely important in recovering and maintaining the health of our reefs. A high abundance of both individuals and species are needed to keep our reefs clean of macroalgae so new orals can thrive, new corals can thrive. And what Uhu do is they scrape those dead surfaces to get it bacteria inside and that allows crustacean coralline algae to settle, which helps corals grow. In other words, few herbivores means few baby corals survive. Second, herbivore populations are depleted in many parts of the main Hawaiian islands, especially where human populations are high. This fact is evident even if one completely discounts the NOAA herbivore stock analysis. Herbivore biomass around Oahu is at less than 5% of its potential. Yes, West Hawaii Island has seen some long-term increases in some herbivores, but that's due to the unique network of fishery replenishment areas there. Analyses also show that all sectors of the fishing community, not just the commercial fisher sectors, have contributed to herbivore depletion. Third, there is great variation between moku and between islands in herbivore abundance, making blanket statewide rules problematic. Logic dictates a regional approach similar to the Maui rules, including community-based management and other spatially explicit approaches. Fourth, side limits, size limits, including slot limits are difficult to follow unless illegal fish can be released unharmed. Gear and spatial restrictions are easier to implement and enforce. One blanket rule that could clearly help replenish herbivores would be banning scuba spearfishing, especially at night. Fifth, the proposed commercial allowable catch limits are based on not very well documented assumptions, which calls for a precautionary approach whereby catches should be reduced even more than proposed. Additionally, the proposed non-commercial rules wrongly pool recreational and subsistence fishing, which are based on different social and cultural practices and ethics. Mahalo.
Hey, mahalo. Next we have Christina Comfort.
Hello, my name is Christina Comfort. Hi, I'm calling from Pupukea on the North Shore of Oahu. Um, and I work with a local nonprofit that's uh dedicated to reducing sewage pollution, land-based pollution. I'm also a PhD candidate at University of Hawaii at Manoa in the Oceanography Department and testifying as a private citizen today. Um, mahalo for the opportunity to comment on the proposed rule changes. Uh, I'd like to express support for DAR's efforts to increase herbivore populations with science-supported recommendations. And um I also believe uh as Dr. Hickson just um just testified that the limits for the commercial fishing uh may need to be reduced even further, um, at least temporarily to allow herbivore populations to recover. Uh, as someone who works in land-based pollution and with coastal ecosystems, I have many colleagues and collaborators who are experts in Hawaii's nearshore fisheries. Uh, for instance, just this week, I watched my colleague, Dr. Greg Azner, present to the Hawaii County Council where he shared 20 years of peer-reviewed multi-agency data from Hawaii Island that shows how reefs can be resilient to climate change impacts when there's a combination of high herbivore populations and low coastal pollution. So along with my work in managing land-based inputs, I think it's really, really important um to move the uh kind of move the bar on herbivore management and I commend DAR for working towards this. Um, concerning the commercial exception, um, I just have had the opportunity to uh listen in and and see um work that's being done by uh colleagues such as Dr. Mark Hickson who just testified, Dr. Alan Friedlander and other collaborators. Uh, and as I read through their expert analysis, data and peer-reviewed studies, um, I I feel that the data that they provide in their written testimony um supports my stated reservations with the uh commercial fishing exceptions and that reducing that daily allowable catch, or sorry, that um, yeah, the allowable catch limit of Uhu um, to at least 50% would be beneficial to give uh Uhu a chance to recover their populations. Um, I'm also in support of the ideas that we've heard um concerning banning scuba fishing and regional management where it is possible and appropriate. Uh, so therefore overall, um, I really support DAR's efforts um to manage herbivore populations and also um urge DAR to consider the expert analyses of uh fishery scientists such as Dr. Azner, Dr. Hickson and other uh other scientists locally here in Hawaii um to help address this problem. Mahalo.
Hey, mahalo. Next we have Phil Rarick.
Hey, this is Phil Rarick, speaking as an individual. Can you hear me okay?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, appreciate the opportunity to provide testimony. I've got three minutes, obviously. I've got a uh, wait a second. With regards to the Kona crab proposals, amendments pursuant to 139551, I have no opposition. And so far as a maniti, no opposition to the increase in the minimum size pursuant to 13954. Uh, however, I question the no bag limit, recommend a reasonable limit for sustainable subsistence community-based fishing and set a commercial limit for take slash possession and sale. And so far as Koli, no opposition on 139525 uh as proposed, calla uh that's kind of like this as a menu to pick apart and or uh order. Section 139511 as it is right now uh has the minimum size for calla as 14 inches. I recommend it to be uh put as 16 inches to be consistent with uh the 16-inch minimum size for calla opeloe in section 139512. Uh, this fish, as you know, takes an incredibly long life and reaching the minimum size uh I think would be better to increase it. I would recommend the prohibition of spearing at night and the prohibition of sale of spearred calla. Uh, with regards to the CML bag limit of, a non-CML bag limit of two per day, I'm okay with that. The CML per day, I question what is the science behind the 50 uh and oppose a 50 as now until, you know, you can provide the science accordingly. I question how to prove if an individual held a commercial calla fishing permit prior to the enactment would be eligible as far as for the new proposed rules. And so far as Uhu, the size limit reduction from 12 to 10 inch, I oppose, recommend because of confusion in the field regulating all Uhu, I emphasize to a consistent for continuity and establish a minimum size of 14 inches uh permitted to take. Agree on the prohibitions of LA Elliott and Uli Ulias proposed. Um, recommend prohibition uh to prohibit the night spearing of Uhu, i.e. night diving. Recommend prohibit the sale of spearred Uhu. Why is that? Uh, it's enforceable. Uh, the CML bag limit of 30 per day, what is the science behind it? People in the field are going to question that. Uh, question it upcoming as far as how provoked, proposed on the new CMV commercial marine vessel rules versus a CML versus a CML with commercial permit. And insofar as a licensed individual with a claim that they're working for a CML but are selling fish to commercial marine dealer, how is that going to be really enforced? So more to follow if time permits. Mahalo.
Hey, mahalo. Next we have Ted Bolin.
Trying to get on.
There you go.
Okay. Aloha David, aloha DAR. Yeah, a little slow with the uptake. Ted Bolin, uh, I was a deputy attorney general for 15 years and uh I co-founded the Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition and I'm testifying on their behalf. The Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition is a group of scientists, educators, filmmakers and environmental advocates who have been working since 2017 to protect Hawaii's coral reefs and ocean. who have been working since 2017 to protect Hawaii's coral reefs and ocean. The Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition strongly supports adoption of rules that provide increased protection of herbivores in Hawaii, and we commend DAR for your proposal. Thank you for this step. There are a few adjustments we would make, but I'm generally, DAR is, excuse me, High Rock is generally in support of these regulations. Tighter rules on herbivore takes are not just a fishing issue. Amending the rules now is essential to future coral survival. As noted by some, we are facing coral dying. We're facing bleaching, warmer oceans, more acidic oceans, and we can't control those alone in Hawaii, but we can take care of some of the local insults, meaning sediments, pollution from the land, and here with fish catch. The herbivores are critical to coral survival because they clean the reefs and enable various settlement of new coral on the reef. We will not have our shoreline. We will not have our beaches and our recreational lifestyle that we are used to in Hawaii, that is fundamental to who we are if we don't have healthy coral reefs. So we have to do everything we can to make the reefs healthy in the next few years, despite all the challenges that I've just referred to. The herbivores scrape and excavate, they browse, they graze. Various types of fish are critical for cleaning the reefs. Herbivore populations are extremely depleted on Oahu. Direct undersea surveys of populations have been performed across all Moku of the main Hawaiian islands and Papua Hana Makua Kea. Herbivore species targeted for fishing are as far below their potential abundance levels. The biomass, on the biomass level, as compared to Papua Hana Makua Kea and other unfished locations. I would agree with those who say that more complete and accurate data would likely improve the analyses. But in the absence of more complete data, the division should follow the precautionary principle, which Hawaii Supreme Court has recognized as an inherent attribute of the public trust doctrine, especially given the risk of herbivore depletion to coral and other aquatic public trust resources. I agree with those who say we need more public education and more enforcement by doe care. For example, the commercial harvest, when you reach the maximum, how are you going to know when you get there? So to sum up, because I see my time is up, the, in particular, the commercial annual catch limit for Oohoo parrotfish is too high. We need to give them a chance to survive by lowering that. The, we should reduce the commercial catch limits by at least 50%. Same applies to kala. The rules should focus more on commercial and recreational takes rather than subsistence fishing. And I agree with those who say that we should ban night fishing, night spearfishing. So thank you again for the opportunity to testify. Appreciate the effort by DAR and willing to answer questions if you have any. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Next, we have Lisa Bishop.
I'm sorry, David, I, my video, oh, okay. Here we go. Thank you. Aloha, David. Thank you for this opportunity to testify today. I'm Lisa Bishop with Friends of Kanama Bay, and I live Oahu. Thank you, DAR, for helping to improve our critically and chronically depleted herbivore population. While corals are keystone species in our near-shore marine environments, herbivores allow them to survive and thrive. As Dr. Alan Friedlander, Dr. Mark Hickson, Dr. Randy Kosaki, and Dr. Kabika Winter stated in the 31 July testimony on this issue, no herbivores, no corals. It is as critically simple as that. We support the proposed rules and principle with the following recommended changes. The commercial catch of Oohoo and kala should be reduced by at least 50%. Night spearfishing should be banned. The burden of replenishing our herbivore populations should fall substantially more on commercial and recreational fishers than on subsistence fishers. And the state should invest in gathering more abundant and accurate fishery data, producing public education campaigns to foster voluntary compliance, and expanding doe care to enforce the rules on those who do not fish ono. Thank you for all the good work that you do, and mahalo for the opportunity to testify today.
Hey, thank you. Next, we have Carol Wilcox.
I'm trying to start my video. There you go.
There we go.
Okay, thank you. My name is Carol Wilcox, and thank you for the opportunity to testify. I support these rules, and thank you to Black Point, Kapuiki. And that's been my backyard for the last 50 years, has been Kapuiki, which is the westernmost area of Mauna Loa Bay tucked inside Black Point. This is one of the two most productive areas of the entire bay and one I was hoping would be considered for the 30 by 30 protection program. It has been fished out. I've read about the potential of destroying an ecosystem by removing one critical species, and I wondered if by any chance the squid was a key to this ecosystem here. So I started researching the role of squid in Hawaiian tradition and found that squid was very frequently and aggressively protected by traditional law and Kona Hiki restrictions. And it bothers me that there's absolutely no restriction on squid in Hawaii. A preliminary report to Congress in 1902 entitled Fishing Laws of Hawaii gives a glimpse of what Hawaiians did to manage their marine resource. They had the big picture. They relied on protecting species rather than size limits and breeding seasons rather than determination of fecundity. Fecundity, and on distinctions between inner and outer reef, on knowledge of where shows of fish congregate. There was distinctions as who could fish and where, and the distribution of catch was covered by protocols. Enforcement relied on a network of agents from tax collectors and police to Kona Hiki to the people themselves, and consequences for unlawful acts could be harsh. Commercial fishing as we know it today does not, did not seem to play a significant role in 1902. So how is it the deal in our, has this authority that you have today? At one time, the king had absolute power over the laws of the land and the sea. The great Mahali of 1848 shifted some of that to the Oili'i, who now own the land and the appurtenent fisheries. Management started to divide into smaller and smaller geographic areas, and eventually enforcement was left to the citizenry, who only had the power of persuasion. And big picture management was lost altogether after annexation and the subsequent Organic Act of 1900, which declared that all marine resources belong to all the people with no accompanying regulation. This progression of less and less regulation over the fisheries has resulted in their degradation. And the laws now favor commercial fishing over the fish. Your job used to belong to the king. Now you have responsibility for the big picture without the absolute power. You have significant tools within your kit, though. Chief among these is requiring fishing licenses, which can raise money and gives you the right to check coolers. You can identify and protect appropriate areas, as was envisioned in the 30 by 30 initiative. The pressure on you to not do this are as powerful as any in the history of Hawaii. It may be too strong a force for you to resist. We understand. We do not envy your position. But in the meantime, back to my little section of the water world, a new threat, cyan, tyran, is rapidly moving in, covering the reef, poisoning the ecosystem, and may very soon turn this place into a lifeless one. And a picture of that is in my background. Thank you for your attention.
Hey, mahalo. Next up, we have Denise Antolini. Aloha.
Aloha. Aloha, David, DAR staff members. Mahalo for the opportunity to testify. My name is Denise Antolini. I'm the volunteer president of Maalama Pupukea Oia up here on the north shore of Oahu. We commend DAR for this rule package. In general, we're very supportive. We share some of the concerns that have already been mentioned by others regarding the commercial take. I do want to particularly endorse the testimony. Right, a couple of people before me, Dr. Lisa Bishop, kind of took the words right out of my mouth. I won't repeat all of that. Up here in the Marine Life Conservation District, of course, take of Oohoo is prohibited, but we see a lot of pressure on Oohoo through poaching, and including at night. And there have been some pretty tragic incidents lately of that. So we know that there's a lot of pressure to take Oohoo, so it's of great concern. And we share some of the issues that have already been raised, including by some of the fishers, including better enforcement, continued maximum effort to control other stressors. We're absolutely in agreement on that. Continued efforts to make sure that the science is up to date. And the last point I want to make is about DAR's ability to extract information as the commercial take. If this permit and a limit is adopted, I think DAR should maximize the opportunity to extract information out of the commercial marine license, out of the take requirement, and minimize the deletion of data for proprietary purposes. That's been an issue that we've noted in the past. So for example, this opportunity would provide you the ability to gather more data, to analyze it in a more transparent way, to engage the stakeholders, who everybody would like more data, more current data, and also to do better adaptive management. So I think, to me, that's key as DAR moves forward, is gathering that data, managing it, using it collectively to inform all the stakeholders who have participated in this hearing. Mahalo, and we wish you the best in getting this rule package through.
Hey, mahalo. Next, we have Juliana Simone.
Hi.
Hi, please go ahead.
Can you see me? Okay.
Now we can.
All right. Thank you for letting us speak today. So I think that this 1595 is a start in the right direction and that we need more. I was resident of Sunset Beach area for 35 years, and I became fascinated with swimming in the reef and especially fascinated by Oohoo. I mean, they're just spectacular fish. And the herbivores, you see them clean the reef, and you see them making the sand at the same time. I personally think all Oohoo should be, fishing should be banned. I want to say that I'm definitely against spearing of any type of fish at night. You're just murdering them in their sleep. And I feel like also with this, people need to understand with saving the reefs, and that's what the herbivores are doing, we're also saving eventually the shoreline that's rapidly disappearing. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Next up, we have Kapena Awai.
Hi, David. Can you hear me?
Yep.
What's up? Hey, um, yeah, so to me, I just, I'm against, you know, this rule that you guys trying to propose. For us, it's a livelihood. I'm fifth-generation commercial fisherman, and I strongly oppose this, this ruling with this two Oohoo, two kala, you know, mani, kola, you know, whatever. All this rules you guys trying to impose in, you know, with this thing you guys coming up with. Um, you know, for me, it's like, a lot of those people that's there, or, you know, some of the people that's there, you know, they're not doing for a living. We dive for a living. We surround our kuli for a living. We do, we do this for a living. We feed the people who know can go out and go catch fish. You know, we, for us, it's a, it's a hard, it's a hard lifestyle. You know, I chose this lifestyle because, hey, my dad, I wanted to carry on what he had left on. And for us, it's, for me, I'm just against this rule, that, I mean, or the two. We cannot survive on two or whatever, you know, we can only take the, what is it, the red Oohoo. And for us, we will be put out of business. And you cannot, like, for us, need more doe care officers out there enforcing. Enforcement is everything, you know, and when you guys talk about scientific data, really, really, David, you guys know who the real scientists, we the real scientists, because we the ones reporting. All these guys who not reporting, all these, you guys don't even get, like, okay, for instance, all these free divers, I'm not trying to, you know, I'm not trying to throw anybody under the bus. But on any given, on any given weekend, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, on any part of the island, roughly about 100 to 200 people go out diving recreationally. You don't, do you, do you guys, how much Oohoo, or how mu, do you guys actually get? You guys only going based off of our data, what we send you guys, but you guys don't get an actual data from the non-recreational people, you know, and another thing is, when you guys talk about, you know, you guys, you know, like those other people was talking about conservation and pollution. You know, you guys got to put this into perspective. Where all shit water go? All our sewage water go all into the ocean. What they treat them with? They treat them with Clorox. So you go get that water, and you go get one Oohoo, and you go put that in the fish tank and go see how long he live. So before they talk about reef dying and everything, the state better look at themselves in the eye and think twice about what they're doing, because you guys putting us guys out of business. And, you know, we're going to be out of one job. You know, that's our job. You know what I mean, right, David? And, you know, I just wanted to tell you guys that, and, yeah, I'm against this ruling. Yeah, and that's it, David.
Hey, mahalo.
Yeah.
Uh, next up, we have Kelvin Ching.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so Kelvin Ching, for the same reasons Kapena just said, you know, the commercial guys, they're going to be the rest with the short end of the stick. You guys using commercial patch reports, that's the only data you folks have. And now you guys going limit the commercial fisherman, which is going to minimize or reduce their catch. And then the next public hearing, you're going to be making decisions based on that reduction of reports. And you're going to say that the fisheries are declining again, which no makes sense. So for the information that you guys are putting forth, I think you guys are selecting specific information to come up with your own agenda for your own reasons. And that's why I don't support this. There's some good things in here, I will admit. But begging or putting the fishermen, especially the commercial fishermen, out of business, when that, they are the people supplying the markets legitimately and legally, feeding the people of Hawaii, and you guys talk about sustainability, and you guys want to buy local and support local. And here you guys talking out of one end and doing something out of the other end. So you guys got to, like, like you just said, you got to look at what you're putting in the ocean as pollutants. And you got to also look at what you're extracting before the thing even going in the ocean. Because the fresh water that you guys diverting or redirecting to housing has a long-term effect on the ecosystems, and I don't hear anything about that. The point that I want to make is, I'm trying to state for manage properly. Because you look at the turtles, the thing is overpopulated. And I go bring this up, I wasn't going to, but I hear all these other people bringing up other things. That's not on my agenda, but the turtles. It's overpopulated, that's to the open function.
Sorry, Kelvin, we lost your audio for a little bit.
I cannot see how things would be temporary until it gets better, because it doesn't happen. So that's what I want to say. I oppose it for those reasons. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have Inga Gibson. Aloha, go ahead.
Hello, hi. Hi, David. Thanks for the opportunity, and thank you very much.
Hello, hi. Um hi David, uh thanks for the opportunity and thank you very much um and DAR for your many years of work on this. I have been following this since I think this began in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, so I appreciate all the time and effort. Um just quickly, housekeeping, I did notice that um the aquarium for fish permit definition still remains in the proposed rules. Um but as you well know, uh the board um through overwhelming opposition to the Kule exemption for the aquarium trade. Um that has been removed. There is no exemption for the aquarium trade. Um however, that reference to the fish, uh aquarium fish permit um still remains, so I believe that's a housekeeping oversight. Um we share the concerns expressed by many, uh the scientists in particular, uh regarding the commercial allowance or commercial exceptions. Um as you know, um we're very concerned about populations of numerous species of herbivores. Um including surgeon fishes, which of course um are also herbivores and primarily, sorry, my dog um captured by the aquarium trade. And we've always maintained that um, you know, there should be no kind of commercial activity at the cost, at the expense of Kanakamoli, local fishers, um subsistence fishers and cultural fishers. Um uh when it comes to commercial activities. Um you're well aware of of DLNR and DLNR's mandate that the priorities, the hierarchy of priorities is first, the resource itself. Second, the peoples, uh the public trust, the people's access to those resources. And third, um at the bottom is the commercial interest. So we agree with those comments about the need to reduce the ACL. Um also important to note, as as I have attended all of the commercial, um all of these hearings on the neighbor islands all week, um is that the subsistence and cultural fishers have been amazingly, you know, supportive. Um and we have only heard the opposition from Oahu, and I don't know if people are aware, but I mean, Oahu makes up about ninety percent of of the sales of Oohoo and Kala, of the commercial business. So as has been said before, you know, we actively support CBSFAs and uh community-based regulations. We think each Moku has their own unique considerations, especially Molakai, where um there is no commercial activity and it is literally cultural subsistence take. Um and uh again, we think um that uh Wahoo um is being essentially provided a massive carve-out um that unlike the other challenges to science, uh uh conversely, I don't think the commercial carve-out is being supported by science. I mean, we're asking local subsistence fishers, you know, just to take two or three a day and allowing, you know, these these astronomical kind of limits for commercial fisheries. But again, having attended the board meeting uh back in December, where the board did direct you to go back for some additional input from commercial fishers, I appreciate that. Um but again, um I think as has been said repeatedly, we need only look at Florida and what's happening there, we are in dire straits. And so people say, you know, what about land-based pollution and what about water quality? And you know, um all these um things that really need to be considered, but it's not an either or. I believe that we can do it all. I believe DAR uh can can um look at all these factors. It is, it isn't, you know, reducing sedimentation or reducing fishing. We need to do everything. And these rules specifically will look at what needs to be done around herbivores. So we don't want perfect uh to be the, and to be a good. We need something to do now. I could go on and on about the changes we would like to see, but right now, we support the rules with your reconsideration of the ACLs for the commercial catch, again, because it really is favoring um the Oahu-centric where, and of course, that's my Moku, but it's just so Oahu-centric with those exceptions and real, really feel for the Kanaka that we work with. Um in the other Moku who are are willing thus far, you know, to to reduce their their take for the future archaic and um you know, future generations. So mahalo for the opportunity. And of course, we'll be submitting a much more comprehensive written testimony. Thank you, David.
Thank you. Thank you. Next up, we have Brent Chang. Brent, do you wish to provide testimony? Okay, moving on, we have Daniela Escontrella.
Hi everyone, uh my name's Daniela Escontrella and I'm a PhD candidate at the University of Hawaii. And I study coral reefs and I'm testifying as a private citizen. So we know that all the uh best available science indicates that we need herbivores for healthy coral reefs. And the science also shows that herbivore, herbivore populations have declined around the main Hawaiian islands. Although climate change is a huge stressor to coral reefs, it's something that's gonna take time and cooperation at the international level to address. Science has also shown that addressing local stressors such as overfishing of herbivores can buy reefs time until these stressors are addressed. I have done dove at various coral reefs around the Wahoo and the only places I've seen large Oohoo and large amounts of herbivores have been at marine protected areas, which happen to have the healthiest coral and highest amount of coral coral cover. While I understand some of the opposition to these regulations, the purpose is to maintain he- healthy coral reefs in perpetuity. So our children and grandchildren can enjoy them and use their resources just like we have. Additionally, these regulations will ultimate ultimately benefit fishermen. More herbivores means more coral, which means more fish. I strongly support the proposed herbivore regulations with some amendments. Uh lower catch limits for commercial, commercial fishermen to allow Oohoo populations to recover. And we should ban night spearfishing. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Next up, we have Hiiyaka Jardine.
Oh, I'm not interested in testifying, just here to listen. Thank you.
Okay mahalo. Next, we have Troy Maeda.
I'll be providing written testimony, I can't talk right now.
Okay, mahalo Troy. Uh let's see. That's all that I see on Zoom on the signup list. Um is there anyone on the Zoom meeting that wishes to provide testimony that has not been called?
I will.
Yeah, please state your name and go ahead.
How's it, my name's uh Eric Rush. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. Uh I am a current PhD candidate at UH Manoa studying coral reefs and I'm testifying today as a private citizen. Uh so I am in strong support of all of these proposed regulations. Healthy herbivore populations are essential to promoting resilient coral reefs. And in the face of global climate change, which we have little ability to overcome alone, we need to do everything possible at the local scale to promote healthy coral reefs. Herbivores, especially Oohoo, perform the essential role of clearing algae from the reef and opening up space for new baby corals to settle, grow and survive. This will become increasingly important as coral bleaching events and other disturbance events, disturbance events become more frequent. I also support a ban on scuba and night spearfishing. And lastly, I recognize that greater enforcement is absolutely critical for these regulations to be successful. Thank you for your time.
Hey, thank you. Anyone else on the Zoom meeting that has not provided testimony yet that wishes to do so? Okay, seeing none. I wanna go back to the in-person site on Oahu and see if there's anyone. First, anyone that has not had an opportunity to provide testimony? That wishes to do so? Aloha.
Great. I was there, named Terawa. I've been born in Kahalua and raised in Kahalua all my life. And what you guys doing, I disagree with them. Maybe when we are, I'm gonna go fishing for my family and my cool punas, they cannot go out, so I go out fishing for them. If we had parties, we fish for them. So what you guys doing is wrong. And planning on my family wanting to come to this meeting, they don't even know about it. You guys should put them on the news, let everybody know what, what you guys doing, what's going on. And with the pollution, I see plenty stuff going on out there, that the city and the state turn their head. Because these guys are politicians up on the hill draining the guys. Um we get plenty rain, the swimming pool draining the ocean, and you tell them you gotta wait, but you, I did, they never did get back to me. So I let you know that I've, I I disagree with what you guys doing. Maybe the fish we surround, the small ones we throw back. But we're not gonna limit ourselves. So I figured I'd let you guys know, I disagree with what you guys doing. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you mahalo.
Hey guys, McConney Christensen, um here to speak up against this proposal. Uh because of the things I see on a reef on a daily basis. I'm out there pretty much every day. I see Kala, massive schools of Kala, nobody molesting them. And you know, th- these are places that only three or right before the pandemic, DLNR was saying was the worst areas in Hawaii, and you guys wanted to close that down then. We have a lot of opinions coming from University of Hawaii for, from individuals that that have been studying coral for one year. And they automatically become subject matter experts. Keep studying. There's a lot to study out there and a lot to learn. But when you take food away from individuals, I have a problem with that. Because what's happening is, when you limit, for example, a Kala to two, how many guys go out there and catch one Kala to feed a family? Usually you won't get, you you might get a school, you might get three or four, if you're lucky. But you're gonna feed a bunch of people, and that, it doesn't happen every day. So where did your data come from? Where did this information come from, where you came up with this whole brilliant idea of creating these amendments to the rules to increase the size of Kole, Manini? What Manini? Which one? Is there only one? Are you sure? Because that's kind of a a big question too, yeah? Cause there's, from being on a reef, you can see a couple different uh types of Manini. And so which ones are you guys talking about? I mean, that's a big red flag right there. Cause some of them might not grow as big as the other one. And when we talk about eggs and when they spawn, and I think Elton probably can uh talk a lot about that, because you guys did the studies yourself not too long ago. So these proposals and amendments really have to be looked at and look at your guys' own data that you guys have, because you guys have a lot. There's no sense in doing this cartwheel over and over again and trying to pick away at our fishing rights. Because that's what's happening. That's what I've seen over the last ten years, fifteen years. I mean, all these guys in the room right now, we've traveled throughout the entire state challenging DLNR and some some new idea that you guys come up with. So be cognizant that we fishermen are still here, we haven't left. And don't mess with the food. Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Yeah, how's it Dave? This is Mike Sur again. I would like to make a request at all. I see Guy Thomas Hill came into uh to testify. A few weeks ago, I was down this market dropping off aku and um you know, I observed that it's all local people that go to these local markets. I was thinking maybe somehow a DLNR could set up a survey with maybe Guy Thomas Hill, and let's find out what's the makeup of these people, because they're all old people for one. They, and the reason they're in the Thomas Hill market buying fresh fish, because they don't eat red meat. So I think that's real, real important that the department consider that old people can't eat red meat. And they're down there buying a fish that's affordable for for them to eat. So I really, really feel that you guys need to consider that. Also, um our local people, they eating the reef fish. Rich people don't eat reef reef fish. They're eating ai and all the high-end stuff, because they can afford to, right? So um I just make that request that maybe we can do a survey at our local fish markets. And let's, let's find out to the bottom of, get to the bottom of it, who's eating our reef fish. You know, I think you have a better understanding once you do that. Thank you.
Hey, thanks.
Hey, this is Salter from uh Irish New Club and Ohana Kai Diving. Uh first off, I wanted to speak on behalf of my friend. Um she was questioning the data used to um justify the take of uh female cone crabs, and she thinks that the uh new proposal should be based off of current data, not data that may have been uh collected uh in two thousand fifteen or previously. Um there've been a lot of changes in the last few years, so I just think it's really important to have current stuff. Um next up, a lot of people have been speaking about enforcement. I got a personal story. I actually got checked by a DLNR officer just last month at uh Yokes. I was uh happy that it was happening, honestly. Uh at the time, I was just preparing for the Kwahian tournament. So um I just had Ta'ape on me, and even though they're all like three or four inches, I mean, they're all legal. It was target practice, it was fun. Uh lastly, I wanna speak about night diving, specifically night diving for Oohoo. Um I'm largely in favor of the new proposals. I think I said earlier, I think it would be nice to allow the recreational subsistence take of Oohoo just because I think it's sometimes difficult to differentiate between the phases. And I think that as long as bag limits are respected, that should be fine. On the commercial side, I think it's really important to continue for there to be a commercial fishery. I think a lot of people are differentiating between commercial and subsistence fishing. But a lot of people who are doing commercial fishing are doing it in order to pay rent, which I think at the end of the day is kind of largely similar. Um going back to uh the things that people have mentioned about night diving, I'm, I think we should continue to allow night diving. Um I think it's impossible to diverse this from class politics. Uh it's mostly working class or more poor people who will go at night and try to get something to eat. I think as long as bag limits are respected, we should continue to allow the take of these fish. Um again, bag limits have to be respected, but if we allow these recreational fishers to continue to go, they can assist um the state, they can assist do care officers, the DLNR. They can report guys way more expansively than the handful of DLNR officers who are on night duty. Um I think allowing commercial guys to still have a vested interest is really important. And although there are, you know, there are uh pain points for this, as long as these bag limits are respected, as long as these annual catch limits are respected, I think that's enough of a compromise that we can move forward with. Even if it meant lowering the non-commercial bag limit, so one a day, if that allowed for like kind of unrestricted access of the Oohoo once legal size, I I think that would be good. But again, I really think it's important to preserve night fishing, um because it's something a lot of people do. I think that rules can be abused even during the day, and I think a lot of the time, night fishing is painted as this evil that if uh taken away will be this magic bullet that will solve all of the fisheries issues. And that's just not true at all. Uh if anything, it might even have the opposite effect with the lack of uh recreational community enforcement that would come from that involvement. Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Hi David, this is Ottenia Saka again. Uh first, I wanted to just talk about the process of the rules that you're going to allow. Not about the substance of the rule amendments itself. So first of all, I think, it's my opinion that the rule amendment has been proposed, has too many rule amendments in one package. It makes it impossible for somebody like me to go through each of the amendments. Develop my arguments for or against those elements of the amendments. And put it down on a piece of paper that somebody like the board member has to read. And make sense of what I'm trying to say. Right? Because if you have like 30 amendments and I write a 60-page testimony. No board member is going to understand all of the process, uh the thought processes that I put in it. Maybe it's just me, but I'm like that. And so first of all, too many items, you should break it up into smaller units. Secondly, because of the time limit that you place on each person, three minutes, it might be. It's unreasonable to expect somebody that has meaningful detailed comments. On each of these proposals to say it in three minutes. It's just not possible. So I think that the time limit is unreasonable. I understand why there's a time limit. Understand that it follows the board procedures, but that brings me to my third point where the hearing is not the same as a board meeting. Is so the board meeting is run by the board voluntary members. They have a very long agenda. And so in order to get through that agenda, they have to place a limit on the number of. Of testimonies that can be heard. I understand that. But hearings are different than board hearings, board meetings. Hearings are like this for a rule amendment is a single topic. Rule amendment. Now, the more items you put in this one topic rule amendment, that makes it last longer, but. Then because it's run also by a staff member, not by a board member. The staff member has to now put this testimony into an a summary document for the board members. Which which will be very difficult uh for me to give you that information for you to then. Translate it into something that the board member will read and understand. And so I think that hearings are very different from board meetings and should not be conducted in the same manner. And so if you want to have 30 plus items, I'm not saying you shouldn't do that. I'm saying break it up into manageable pieces. Do five hearings, do five hearings one after another if you want to on the same day. I'm just saying that with so many amendments proposed in one rule package. It's impossible to provide meaningful comments. Thank you for the opportunity to test out. I wanted to enter that complaint as part of a public record. Thank you very much.
Hey, thank you.
Hi again, David. I didn't realize that Mr. Miyosaki was my voice. Good administrative issue. I also would like to discuss the administrative. And administrative issue relating to the subject. Now, you have been um. Advising everyone to go ahead and send email to DLNR, what? I don't know, whatever it is. I I would ask that you provide a little bit more guidance because if I go up to the, I type in my. Tool, then then what do I do? As for example, maybe you got, maybe you can recommend a standard subject line or an agenda item so that. Everybody use on the same sheet of page. So that's just a suggestion. Provide some guidance besides saying just send an email. Number two is. I I send the email, I have no, I don't believe I have any assurances that you've received it. And I would, I would appreciate that acknowledgement of the receipt of my testimony. And number three, and I don't know if this this is a legal issue, but I'll throw it on the table anyway. Um, I would like to have the opportunity to review or look at a repository. For all the written testimonies that have been submitted. Is that currently available? Yes or no? You don't know? I don't know. So that's something, I you know, I turn on the table, I just asked because in in the interest of transparency, I think it would be beneficial if. All those stakeholders that are involved and concerned, I have an opportunity to do that. That's what the state does. But they can do it, you're part of the state, so I think you guys can do it too. That's it. Thank you.
Hey, thanks, John. Luna, anyone else on Oahu? Okay, thanks. I'm gonna go back to the Zoom meeting um and call people that would like to provide additional testimony. Um. First up, so I'm gonna go in the order that um.
I can get one more, David.
Uh, on Oahu?
Iaka.
Right, on the Zoom, right? Okay, uh, go ahead, Iaka.
Thank you. Yeah, I would also like to recommend that there be a public record of the testimony similar to. Uh, when the legislature has bills, the public is able to submit testimony and then we're able to kind of see. What people have said on the topic because I think that would also help, for me anyway. Um, see the evidence or data that people are basing their testimony off of and it may help me to understand. Why people think a certain way um and then kind of help me to make a decision on how I feel about this specific issue. So if there could be a public platform. For testimony viewing, that would be great.
Okay, mahalo. I'm gonna go to Phil Rarick.
Hey, mahalo, David. Uh. Would uh like to continue on the prior testimony. Again, I'm speaking as an individual, not representing. Any specific state entity. I'd like to uh recognize the culmination of years of of the scoping sessions that DAR did. The BLNR meetings as far as input from the CMO holders. Uh, the outreach from DNR, DAR educational staff and that outreach staff, Luna, et cetera. And big mahalo to that. Uh, the outreach from DAR and DoCare to the Pacific Islander community, uh the Wow community, uh Weir Ocean. Um. And to consider the island-based fishing rules, exemptions for the native, you know, gathering rights. Um, comments earlier as far as herbivores equal healthy reefs, you know, it kind of makes sense. Oh, I kind of like to look at compliance versus enforcement actions. And pono fishing, uh local practices. And generations of institutional uh knowledge versus uh historical data. Um, one of the issues that I've seen in over 40 years of work in the field. Um. Is basically. The last 10 years, the number one cited fish for violations, if you will. Uh, has been kala. Absolute number one and on the island of Oahu and specifically as far as on the South Shore, focusing on Moanaloa Bay. And I personally witnessed the collapse, uh my term, my words, of the kala inshore fisheries and I stress inshore. So. What was a half a dozen years ago, groups would go out and be cited for a collective gathering of 188 undersized kala. Now it might be a few. Um, so what does that tell me? They're not going out as much or there's not as many fish that are being taken illegally. And with that. Um, you've got a systemic change as far as the fisherperson that's out there. The Pacific Islander uh presence at nighttime in the last 10 years has been significant. And in the last year, year and a half, there's been more and more of those individuals that were. Groups of six to 10 individuals that were going out from shoreline are now. Uh, in the possession of a small craft going out, upward motor-powered boats and they're going out deeper near shore. And with that, it's yet to be determined as far as the deep-water kala fishery. But basically, this is all without exception, 100% at night. That's why you've got a lot of individuals making their comments, personal opinions as far as nighttime spearfishing. But check the data insofar as the number of citations and what is being cited for. And the number one item is taking kala less than 14 inches. Uh, Oohoo undersizes there. Most individuals don't understand the existing rules as far as administrative rules, as far as what is and is not regulated. Your PowerPoint presentation did a good job, but it it basically lumped everything together. And a lot of resource users still will not understand it as far as going forward. So I would uh not paint the Oahu situation as statewide. I only speak for my observations on Oahu. But it's, the nearshore fisheries in the herbivore species of kala is collapsing and that's why you guys are looking at that and. Oohoo or the individuals that claim they're subsistence fishermen are going out, targeting that, claiming they're not commercial. So basically, my suggestion to consider if there's a prohibition on the take of Oohoo at night. Which is a nocturnal fish that basically is sleeping. And if there's, the only way to enforce that or one of the ways to enforce that is more people at night 24/7. Or if you prohibit the sale of spirit Oohoo. Uh, at retail, uh as you've got in 1395-1 and your definitions. That's the only way that you can really close the gap on that and bring. Compliance versus violations of enforcement. So that's my point. I appreciate your time.
Hey, thank you. Next, we have Kapana Awai. Go ahead, Kapana. Need to unmute yourself.
David.
Yeah, go ahead.
Hey, what's up, David? Yeah, um, yeah, I just wanted to um rev- um get back on the topic. Um, so you guys were talking about, um. You know how like Mike was saying something about um the poor people eat, you know, like basically what he was saying is true. Um, reef reef fish, more middle-class and I mean, you know, poor people, um. We only can afford, you know, people only can afford what they can, you know, what 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 they can afford, basically. And um, you know, basically, like for what we do and you know, David. That our catches, I mean, you know, I can go anywhere on this island. You see, we fish this whole island. On any given day, even daytime, doesn't matter if it's day or night. Um, you know, it's the same concept. People think that at night. Yeah, the fish might be a little bit, yeah, the fish might be, might be half sleeping there, but they don't know the risks that we take at night. Um, what we see at night, um, you know, we, for us, I only get one, I only have, um, you know, um. My 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 boat is only so big and um, you know, basically what I'm trying to say is everybody thinks that banning scuba fishing at night. Would be the cons, would be the primary idea. But basically what you're doing is. People still going to catch them. So basically, people during the day, even if we went daytime, people still catch the same fish at during the daytime. So. Um, to me, it's like this whole ruling thing that you guys are trying to crack down on, it ain't gonna work. And secondly, um. You know, when we report, when we report our catches on any given day or, you know, when we go out, um. It's not like. We, it's not like you guys asking us, oh, how much red Oohoo you guys caught and how much blue Oohoo you guys caught. There's no scientific data showing for the past, I don't know how many years, there's no scientific data showing. Um, how much more red Oohoo or blue, is there more red Oohoo being taken or blue Oohoo um that we, you know? Only you guys that know is that the handful of people who's reporting, like I said, um. Lack of enforcement is a big issue. Um, because there's people out there that catches the fish and they don't report it. They're on, they're on, um, you know, social platforms and they're selling the fish, which someone like me who reports every month. Who pays taxes on this fish. It's not like we're getting away with anything. We pay taxes on this fish. Um, you know, we like it, we like, just, this is our job. This is our livelihood. You guys take this away from us. It's really gonna affect my business and for what we do. You you get what I mean, right? And furthermore. A lot of people locally, like. They should do us a scientific, um, you guys should do it, DoCare should do a survey at any given market or at all markets. And see and witness how much people rather eat local fresh fish. Because basically, my my grandma and my grandpa or anybody's, you know, elders or. You know, anybody, they don't want to be eating imported pompano or or, you you know what I mean, tilapia. Basically, that's what you guys are trying to do. And my last topic is, um, you know, for me, it's wrong, what you, what is wrong with these rules that you guys are trying to make. Towards us because it's a direct blow to us and all these UH people that's trying to say they're scientists and PhD. Come on, David. We in this water day in and day out. We live and breathe in the wild. We, that's all we do every day, all day. We from the wild, wild west. That's all we do. And you know what I mean? Yes, so the real scientist is us, David. You know that, David. You see the catches. And you know, my last topic is this. We, us us as Hawaiians, we like know who is funding all of more because that 30/30. That's wrong. And that's all I get for saying, David. Thank you, bro. Mahalos.
Hey, mahalo.
Yeah.
Uh, is there anybody else on the Zoom that would like to provide additional testimony or that has not had a chance to provide testimony? Oh, yes, go ahead, Uncle Roy.
Thank you, David. Um, the thousand-pound gorilla in this room is the absence of recreational and non-commercial catch. And if you would reference the Kanohe Bay study that was done by DAR so many years ago. Assessing the impact at Kanohe Bay between commercial and recreational fishermen. And you will see a significant amount of recreational fishing. Far surpassing that of the commercial fishermen. So we look at the commercial data and and Denise Cantolini mentioned the fact that you needed more data and. The reason that you couldn't give some data is because of this, um, the limit on how many people are in the fishery. That's how few people that are in the fishery commercially. Let's get real. So when you see declining catch, isn't it obvious that fewer guys are gonna be landing fewer fish? But on the other hand, you also heard testimony with regard to growing population. You see more come, non-commercial recreational divers out there on a given day, especially on weekends. Versus a commercial guy who would not be out there competing with them. So you need to include that in your your assessment. And and that's why I complained about the um stock assessment because it fails to include that large segment of the community. The other part, talking about freshwater. Um. If you reference an article within Malama Monalua's Heritage Center's website. There's an article in there by Mrs. Eveliko, uh who is a Kamai family, uh lived down the street from me. And her um reaction to the dredging at Hawaii Kai. Her observation was following that dredging at Hawaii Kai. The kala limo at Monalua Bay disappeared. And there's pictures of that. So no wonder. And Anui. The Palani, the kala. Who depend on that kind of limo are diminishing on the bay. So you know, you you need to do a complete study. You you cannot just look at fishing. You need to look at the environment. Freshwater is one too. You know, I as a deep, deep water bottom fish fishermen know that. Fresh water is important to opaha paha and Uku. They need that fresh water. And and if you recall, Uncle Buzzy Aigard saying he depleted the fish up in the Northwest Hawaiian Islands. There is no fresh water up there, David. So the juveniles couldn't re- the the eggs couldn't even be become viable. The Hawaiians had it right. They were called the Leeward Islands. The level and juvenile fish drift was to the Northwest Hawaiian Islands. And when you took all the adults out. There was no replenishment until the next generation. And you know how slow growing those reef fish are? So yeah, Uncle Buzzy was right. He killed the fishery. But he took out all the uh ahole hole, the mullet, the akule. And guess what? They weren't replaced because there is no regeneration up there. It depends on the main Hawaiian islands. So. I I I just ask you guys to do a better job of doing the science. Don't just look at the fishery. Look at some of the anthropological impacts that are occurring and look at. The big gorilla. The non-commercial recreational fishing community and their impact on the fishery. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Anyone else on the Zoom meeting that wishes to provide testimony or add to their testimony? Okay. Well, we can move on. Persons unable to attend today or wishing to present additional comments may mail written testimony. To us by Monday, August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Please mail testimonies to Department of Land and Natural Resources, Division of Aquatic Resources. Eleven fifty-one Punch Bowl Street, Room three thirty. Honolulu, Hawaii nine six eight one three. Written testimony may also be submitted submitted by email to dlnr.aquatics@hawaii.gov. Uh as suggested by um one of the testifiers, you can put in the subject line. Testimony on herbivore and corner crab public hearing. Uh just to make sure that um it's clear that it's this testimony. This is a projected timeline for these rules after this public hearing. The dates are estimates, assuming that there's no significant changes to the proposal based on the testimony received. Of course, if there are changes, the testimony would be or the timeline would be pushed back. Based on the testimonies presented. The department will submit its findings and recommendations to the Board of Land and Natural Resources. If approved by the board, the Department of the Attorney General will conduct the final legal review. And if approved, the proposed rules will be given to the governor for his final approval. Should the governor grant approval, certified copies will be filed with the Lieutenant Governor's Office. And after ten days, it becomes effective as law. Are there any questions regarding this process? Hey, on behalf of the Board of Land and Natural Resources and the Division of Aquatic Resources. Thank you for attending this public hearing. It is now seven forty-five PM and this public hearing is now adjourned. Mahalo for taking time out of your day to attend this public hearing. Aloha.